Good morning, everybody. This is February the 11th at 9:00 a.m., and the Board of County Commissioners is going to have a workshop on the rights of nature. We've also noticed this public meeting for the Environmental Protection Advisory Committee, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, the Charter Review Commission, Rural Concerns Advisory Committee, Land Conservation Board, and the Planning Commission. And we do this so that members of any of those boards who are here, and I see some, I think from most of the boards, can speak without any concern about sunshine issues. We're recording it, and we have the clerk here as well. And I'll just, if you're a member of any of these boards, when you get up to speak, it would be helpful that you just identify yourself as a board member of those committees. And we're doing this for a couple of reasons. It's very timely. This last weekend, the University of Florida Law School had a conference that included a big discussion about the rights of nature. And the Elatua County Charter Review Commission, whose attorney is here today, is going to be discussing it at one of their very next meetings, and they've got a couple of different proposals in front of them. There's an ongoing citizens' initiative for the rights of nature for the Santa Fe River, and we'll hear from some of those folks. And then the Board of County Commissioners is considering what potential charter amendment proposals that we will be considering, I think, at our meeting a week from today. And so it's very timely that we have a special guest who's the national or international expert, or one of them anyway, on rights of nature, and we're going to be using as much of his time as possible so that we can vet this rights of nature business and figure out what would be the best role for Elatua County and all of these different boards and committees and efforts. And so what we'll do is we'll first adopt the agenda, and there's no action that we'll be considering today, but we'll hear the rights of nature presentation. Then I'll ask David Moritz, who's with our Environmental Protection Advisory Committee, to introduce our guest. And then Tom Lindsay, our guest, will make a 10- or 15-minute presentation. We'll then have kind of a freewheeling question-and-answer session that I'll just kind of be the emcee of. And then we'll let our favorite photographer and springs advocate, John Moran, get up and kind of close the session. We have a target to close by 11:00. The Board of County Commissioners meets at 11:30, and they need a little time to reset the room and so forth, but people can continue their individual discussions in Grace Night, which is right around the corner if they care to. So with that, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any other items need to go on this agenda? If not, on favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. So, David.
Mr. Chair, my name's David Moritz. I am a member of your Elatua County Environmental Protection Advisory Committee. I'm also chair of the Santa Fe River Bill of Rights and a board member for the Florida Rights of Nature Network, which represents a group of different counties around the state who are also presenting similar charter amendments to their counties. And I have the honor today of, first, I'm going to give you a few words and biographical of Mr. Lindsay, but I have the honor of introducing him. Mr. Lindsay serves as Senior Counsel for the Center for Democratic and Environmental Rights, CEDR, an organization committed to globally advancing environmental rights. He is also co-founder of the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund, SLDF, a nonprofit law firm that has provided free legal services to over 500 local governments and nonprofit organizations since 1995. He also sits on the Board of Advisors of the New Earth Foundation. Mr. Lindsay is a cum laude graduate of the Widener Law School and a three-time recipient of the law school's Public Interest Law Award. He has been a finalist for the Ford Foundation's Leadership for a Changing World Award and is a recipient of the Pennsylvania Farmers Union's Golden Triangle Legislative Award. He has license to practice law in Pennsylvania, and he has admitted to practice in the United States Supreme Court, the Third, Fourth, Eighth, and Tenth Circuit Courts of Appeals, and the U.S. District Court for the Western and Middle Districts of Pennsylvania. His work has been featured in the New York Times, the Los Angeles Times, Mother Jones, and the Nation Magazine, and he was named in 2007 as one of Forbes Magazine's Top 10 Revolutionaries. And in 2018, Lindsay was named as one of the top 400 environmentalists of the last 200 years in the two-volume encyclopedia, American Environmental Leaders, third edition, Gray House Publishing, et cetera, et cetera. And I give you Mr. Thomas Lindsay Esquera.
Good morning. Thank you very much for being here.
Good morning. I think that ate up most of my time, probably. So first off, thank you to the commissioners for taking time out. I know this in some ways seems like a luxury to take two hours to spend on a particular issue, and I know you guys are busy in many other ways. And I also like to thank David and John. I had the opportunity to paddle with them, float with them yesterday on the Santa Fe River, so I saw Post Springs and a bunch of other things that the river has to offer, including about 200 turtles. So I was planning to speak a little bit longer than 15 minutes, but I'm going to try to talk as quickly as possible, and I hope people interrupt me for questions as we go through this. It's a complex area of law. It's almost like the intersection of municipal constitutional and environmental law, which is where we spent our time for the past 25 years, and most lawyers spend their entire careers focused sometimes on one paragraph within one piece of environmental legislation in one of those areas. So we're going to put on the jets today, I think, and run through some of the history of rights of nature stuff, then how we came to be doing this work, because I think our journey through the environmental regulatory maze is a similar journey to other people that have arrived at this point. And finally, to the dozen counties or so in Florida that are now working on rights of nature stuff, which is very exciting to us, and the House and Senate bills, which have been introduced to preempt you in case you decide to move forward with certain parts of lawmaking. And I think the popularity of some of this work was shown at the most recent Public Interest Environmental Conference that was held at UF, the law school over at UF just this past weekend. We had an overflow crowd and brought in speakers from Columbia and Pittsburgh and a bunch of other places that have done this kind of work. So just to start out, I wanted to give a listing of what's happening, what's happened over the past 14 years, just to bring us up to date. So 14 years ago, in a little borough called Tamacqua in Coal Country in northeastern Pennsylvania, in response to a proposal to dump 700,000 tons of PCB-laden river dredge from the Hudson and Delaware Rivers into open mine pits in the borough of Tamacqua, the Tamacqua Borough Council adopted a law that recognized the Little Schoolkill River and other ecosystems in the community as possessing the legally enforceable rights to exist and to thrive. So legally enforceable binding rights recognized on behalf of the Little Schoolkill River. In 2008, after hearing the work in Tamacqua, we got a call from the Ecuadorian Constitutional Assembly, which was in the process of writing a new constitution for the country of Ecuador, and they had been following some of this work in these localities in Pennsylvania around rights of nature, and were working to add a provision to their new constitution dealing with ecosystems having rights. And they called us down to meet with the Constitutional Assembly. That new constitution, which included the rights of nature to exist, flourish, and evolve, again legally binding rights for ecosystems, was actually added to the constitution, which was ratified overwhelmingly in 2008, becoming the first country in the world to shift from what we refer to as a property-based system of environmental protection to a rights-based system of environmental protection. In 2010, as this work began to grow, the city of Pittsburgh, the City Council of Pittsburgh, unanimously adopted a ban on oil and gas extraction within the city of Pittsburgh and included a provision recognizing the rights of the three rivers within the city and other water ecosystems to exist and flourish, again legally binding enforceable rights for those three rivers. And then we had the beginning of some enforcement cases. So after the Ecuadorian Constitution was adopted, there have been 60-some cases brought to enforce the rights of nature as written in the Ecuadorian Constitution. And the first case was brought by a river itself, the Vilcabamba River against the local government in Ecuador. So it kind of bends our brains sometimes to think of an ecosystem as a plaintiff, but there's been over 60 cases of that sort in Ecuador with judges ruling on behalf of the ecosystems against the polluter or against the entity that was, in this case, dumping waste debris into the river. In 2016, the Ho-Chunk Nation in Wisconsin, first tribe in the United States, in fact, first tribe in the world, to formally add rights of nature language to their tribal constitution, provided that ecosystems possess inherent fundamental and inalienable rights to, quote, "naturally exist, flourish, regenerate, and evolve." So again, legally enforceable binding rights, this time within a tribal nation instead of a western-type municipality. In that same year, a case was brought by indigenous communities in Colombia to defend the Atrotto River in Colombia to stop illegal mining activities in the region. Colombian Constitutional Court, highest court in Colombia, decreed that the Atrotto River possessed rights to protection, conservation, maintenance, and restoration, again binding legally enforceable legal rights. Next year, in 2017, a court in India, in response to pollution of the Ganges River, ruled that the Ganges, as well as some of its main tributaries, were legal and living entities, having the status of legal persons, again legally binding rights as persons. 2018, one of the biggest cases here, campaigns here, People of Toledo, Ohio overwhelmingly adopted a Lake Erie Bill of Rights, which recognizes that Lake Erie has the rights to exist, flourish, and naturally evolve. In 2018, the Constitutional Court of Columbia again ruled on rights of nature, declaring the Amazon region as a subject of rights, so rights accruing to that region. That same year, the Ponca Nation of Oklahoma, another tribe, became the first tribe to adopt a customary law recognizing the rights of nature. The White Earth Band of the Chipewa Nation, that same year, recognized legal rights for wild rice, manoman, as they refer to a traditional staple crop of the Anishinaabe people. Last year, the country of Uganda enacted a National Environmental Act in which it recognized nature as having the right to exist, persist, maintain, and regenerate its vital cycles, structure, functions, and processes of evolution. Traveling around the world, we're almost done, the High Court in Bangladesh, also that same year, recognized rights of all rivers in the country against sand mining, dredging, illegal industrial pollution. And just two more. The Urok Tribe in Northern California just recently adopted a resolution establishing the rights of the Klamath River to exist, flourish, and naturally evolve, so another tribal nation. And finally, just three weeks ago, the Menominee Tribe in Wisconsin adopted a rights of the Menominee River resolution establishing that the river possesses inherent and legal rights, including the rights to naturally exist, flourish, regenerate, and evolve. So as I joked to the Public Interest Environmental Conference when I spoke, got an email recently from a law professor, colleague of mine, who asked me what in God's name was happening here with this evolution of the law and all of these different places seemingly coming to this one conclusion about the failure of environmental regulatory law to actually protect nature, to protect ecosystems and our survival systems and life support systems. And I wish there was one unified answer to all this, but there really isn't, and after all, we're probably the ones to give the answer, because I wrote the Tamacqua law 14 years ago. I helped to write the Ecuadorian Constitutional Assembly's language that eventually made it into law. But I don't think there's a unified field theory for why this is emerging, except for the fact that we're killing the planet, and it's time to switch to a different system of law that doesn't treat ecosystems as property, but as something else. And so just to talk a couple of minutes about my journey, we didn't start with rights of nature. We didn't say, hey, wouldn't it be a great idea to give ecosystems rights? For 12 years, we struggled to enforce this country's national environmental laws. So we did Clean Air Act cases, Clean Water Act cases, we did permit appeals, we did zoning hearing board appeals. And I guess the one thing to conclude coming out of that process for us is that even though we won quite a bit temporarily on those projects, that the corporations proposing them would simply come back and submit a new complete permit application. Or in cases where we won over issues of law, they would simply go to the legislature and get the law changed. So it was like a self-sealing tire, and if I had to characterize those days, I'd characterize them as whack-a-mole. So we were running around representing community organizations, African-American communities in eastern Pennsylvania that were threatened with five new toxic waste incinerators. I mean, it's an endless battle on that front, but even when we would win, it felt like the movie Groundhog Day. If you guys have seen Groundhog Day, living the same day over and over again, in which even though we would win a temporary stay of execution for the ecosystems that we were defending, that eventually those projects would come back and eventually get cited. So one of the things I usually say in talks is that unfortunately, that's the reason why 40 years after the major environmental laws have been passed in the United States, we're in worse shape now, 40 years later than we were before they were passed. And some people sometimes raise their hand in our sessions and say, well, that's not true. Rivers don't catch on fire anymore, to which I usually say, well, if that's our standard, then we're really in serious trouble in the U.S. But there's all these doctrines that have been manufactured to control you, to control communities, to control what we do and how we protect ecosystems. There's the permit shield defense, i.e. I have a permit, I can do what I need to do under the permit, you can't hold me liable for any of that. There's standing and injury, which is all homocentric, anthropocentric principles about injury to persons and showing property injury, those types of things. And I think my straw, the last straw that broke my camel's back, was being in a case dealing with the Clean Water Act in which the case, the judge and the court, was citing something called the reasonable bird rule, in which the question was, was this particular tributary we were suing on behalf of for the community group covered by the Clean Water Act? And because the Clean Water Act was passed under the authority of Congress to regulate commerce, under the Commerce Clause, and that's a whole separate discussion entirely, but the inquiry of the court, starting with the U.S. Supreme Court with this reasonable bird rule, was would a reasonable bird flying between and over state lines reasonably land on this tributary, therefore giving it Commerce Clause authority to be protected because it was interstate commerce by a bird flying over state lines? I think that was the day I ran screaming out of the courtroom. And two other things. One is that when the corporations defend these permits, the monies that they spend defending the permits is tax-deductible. There are structural issues around all this. It's a reasonable and necessary business expense for them to defend the permits, but yet our community groups have the burden of proof to actually raise the money and spend the money to keep those permits in place or not issued. And so a good quote from Jane Ann Morris, she's a corporate historian, she said, "At regulatory agencies, corporations have constitutional rights to due process and equal protection that human persons affected citizens do not have. For us, there's a democracy theme park where we can pull levers on voting machines and talk into microphones at hearings, but don't worry, they're not connected to anything and nobody's listening except for us." So I think that's some of the frustration that comes out of the community groups that are trying to protect these ecosystems. So as we were casting around for something different, some better way to protect ecosystems and nature and represent communities, we ran into the rights of nature concept. And we ran into it through a 1972 law review written by a professor at USC, Christopher Stone. He wrote a law review article that called "Should Trees Have Standing?" toward legal rights for natural objects. And it happened to come out at the same time that the U.S. Supreme Court was deciding a case called Sierra Club versus Morton. Won't get into details, but in essence, Walt Disney Corporation wanted to put a ski resort in Mineral King Valley, and the Sierra Club brought a challenge to that. The Sierra Club was then challenged by the U.S. Forest Service, who had issued a permit for the development, who said that the Sierra Club didn't have standing to bring the case in an attempt to dismiss the case, saying that the Sierra Club didn't have an injury that they could show to maintain their action in the court. And there's a famous dissent by Justice Douglas in the U.S. Supreme Court, who I think said it very well, and this is the quote from that Supreme Court case. He wrote, "Inanimate objects are sometimes parties in litigation. A ship has a legal personality, a fiction found useful for maritime purposes. The corporation, a creature of ecclesiastical laws, an acceptable adversary in large fortunes right on its cases. The ordinary corporation is a person for purposes of the adjudicatory processes. So it should be as respects valleys, alpine meadows, rivers, lakes, estuaries, beaches, rivers, groves of trees, swampland, or even air that feels the destructive pressures of modern technology and modern life. The river, for example, is the living symbol of all the life it sustains or nourishes, fish, aquatic insects, otter, fisher, deer, elk, bear, and all other animals, including man, who are dependent on it or who enjoy it for its sight, its sound, or its life. The river as plaintiff speaks to the ecological unit of life that is part of it. Then there will be assurances that all the forms of life which it represents will stand before the court. The piliadid woodpecker, as well as the coyote and bear, the lemmings, as well as the trout in the streams, those inarticulate members of the ecological group cannot speak, but those people who have so frequent the place as to know its values and wonders will be able to speak for the entire ecological community." In essence, Justice Douglas wrote his dissent to suggest that Mineral King itself should be a plaintiff and shouldn't have to rely on the Sierra Club to actually be a plaintiff for it. So a bunch of cases were brought after Justice Douglas's dissent. Most were unsuccessful. One was brought here in Florida, using the loggerhead turtle as a plaintiff. I didn't know that until I did research for the P I E C conference. Lagerhead Turtle versus County Council of Fallujah County, Florida. That was the case that was brought in the name of the loggerhead turtle. We sometimes trace this rights of nature stuff back to Justice Douglas and Christopher Stone, but we forget that rights of nature is an indigenous value, that indigenous communities for the past 10,000 years have seen nature as something other than property to be used, but something in a different category. In essence, Western European law has squashed that, forced it out. Bundle of rights that we all learned in law school, part of those bundle of property rights is the right to destroy. So basically, we have a system of government and law in the United States that allows those who owned the most ecosystems to destroy the most ecosystems, through that property ownership piece of environmental regulation that we have in the United States. So the story doesn't stop there, of course. It's not as easy as just passing a law. It's not as easy as just saying, this is a better way to protect ecosystems, and we need to actually move in that direction. What we call the dead hands of the old system, so the rights of nature as we see it as a new system, it's a new paradigm, it's a new development, a new movement. There's an old system based on property rights and property stuff that reaches back to grab that new movement away, and that evidences itself usually in lawsuits that are brought to challenge these rights of nature provisions. And they do so with the four horsemen, that we affectionately refer to them as. One is corporate rights. Corporations have constitutional rights in the United States. What that matters here is that corporations claim that their permits are property, so when they get a piece of property that is a permit, that that becomes property to them, and any actions taken by government to stop the use of that property or activities under the permit are takings from a constitutional perspective under the Fifth Amendment. In addition, corporations claim Commerce Clause rights, that you folks, county level, municipal government, state governments can't regulate interstate commerce and therefore challenge it from that direction. And a little rule that always sounds funny, but it's called Dillon's Rule, which is that municipal governments only have the powers that the state government chooses to give to it, and therefore that's a limitation as well. And finally, the great, and no offense, but we use Florida as like preemption on steroids, the last doctrine, which is preemption, state and federal preemption. But where the corporate rights, corporate Commerce Clause rights, Dillon's Rule, don't work to take these apart, they turn to preemption, which is generally the state legislature coming in to preempt the municipalities from doing X, Y, and Z. You have preemption on steroids here. From a report recently put out by Integrity Florida, there were 60 preemption bills introduced in 2019, 2020 in the State House and Senate. They include everything from local regulation of nutritional information, banning municipalities from going beyond state standards, affordable housing, minimum wage, gun control, single-use plastics, plastic bags, plastic straws, tree protections, sanctuary cities, you name it, you're a serf of the city, of the state in Florida. It's unlike anything we've ever seen before, especially with the criminal provisions around preemption that surfaced with the gun control laws relatively recently. So that's why this is not just about environmental rights, it's about democratic rights. The preemption stuff especially triggers that. We have spent the last 15 years looking at legal theories to expand municipal portals of lawmaking to constrain state preemptive legislation. We don't think anything short of a legal constraint, most likely a judicial constraint or a constitutional amendment, to restrain the authority of the state to stop municipalities from adopting more stringent environmental standards at the local level is going to stop this preemption run amok in Florida and other places. It's that theory that we bring to the charter amendment work and the ordinance work and the other counsel that we give to local governments across the United States. And finally, to bring back to Florida, and then I'll finish up. Eight months ago, an individual named Chuck O'Neill, he's a statewide environmental activist who's been through some of the same regulatory fights and challenges that brought us to this place, contacted us from Orange County, and he had come to the conclusion that nothing short of a Wakava Econ Lock Hatchie River Bill of Rights, one that recognizes legally enforceable rights for those rivers in Orange County, was going to do the trick of actually protecting those ecosystems. He introduced the concept to the Orange County Charter Review Commission, and the Orange County Charter Review Commission voted to send the concept to the committee, to a committee forum, to work on advancing that to the ballot. They voted unanimously to approve that at the committee level, to move it back to the full CRC. The CRC last week voted seven to five on the first reading to advance the proposal to the ballot. There's going to be a second reading on March 4th, I believe, is the date. So that's the first Charter Review Commission in Florida to tangle with this concept and send it through the various processes at this point. Across Florida, there are 14 different efforts now, including your homegrown Santa Fe Bill of Rights, Santa Fe River Bill of Rights, collecting petition signatures. There's the Kalusahatchee River Bill of Rights under Fort Myers, Pensacola Bay Bill of Rights. There's a bunch, and people are moving because the system has failed. I think that has become clear to the folks that are moving the rights of nature stuff in different places, that this regulatory system, a property-based system of environmental regulation, has failed. It's failed. And that doesn't mean that the work that people have done within it is worthless, because we'd be in a worse place now than we would be unless those people have been on the front lines. But I think we have to look back at those 40 years of environmental regulation as kind of a blip in terms of what we actually need to be doing for ecosystems, and understand that we stand in the same place as the abolitionists did in the 1840s, women did in the 1850s, that they were rightless under the system of law and had to actually drive themselves into the Constitution. I think that's pretty much where we find ourselves today. So two House and Senate bills, you guys are probably familiar with them. Senate Bill 1382, House Bill 1199. They were introduced about a month and a half ago, if memory serves correct. The dead hands of the system coming back to actually strip you of democratic legislative authority, or attempt to, from passing rights of nature laws. The key phrase in those bills is, quote, "A local government may not recognize, grant, convey, or extend legal standing or legal rights to a plant, an animal, a body of water, or any other part of the natural environment." That's the paragraph in those bills. At the P I E C conference, I made the statement that in the U.S., Florida is really now the new front line for whether the system's capable of transitioning to this new rights-based protection for ecosystems. And I think time will tell whether obedience to the old system is stronger than the need to transcend that system and save places like Post Springs, which I spent some time in yesterday. So just to end and turn it over to John. In 15 short years, rights of nature is no longer the fringe that it once was. 15 years ago, talking about rights of nature may have put you in a specially protected mental asylum, but now it's a movement. I'm convinced that it's the next frontier of environmental law in the United States. It will be what we are talking about 30 years from now, developing this new piece of environmental law. So enforcement case in Ecuador, courts in Colombia and India, Tulane Law School co-hosted a conference with us on rights of nature, Vermont Law School, the Preeminent Environmental Law School in the United States, the University of Florida, of course, 11 College of Law this past weekend with overflow crowds on the rights of nature stuff. We think every movement moves through this stage. We think that's what we're seeing now. Christopher Stone, I'd like to leave you with just this quote. He wrote, and he was the guy that did the 1972 law review article that started some of this. "Throughout legal history, each successive extension of rights to some new entity has been thereto for a bit unthinkable. We are inclined to suppose the rightlessness of rightless things to be a decree of nature, not a legal convention acting in support of some status quo. It is thus that we defer, considering the choices involved in all their moral, social, and economic dimensions. And so the United States Supreme Court could straight-facedly tell us in Dred Scott that blacks have been denied the rights of citizenship as a subordinate and inferior class of beings who have been subjugated by the dominant race. The fact is that each time there is a movement to convert rights onto some new entity, the proposal is bound to sound odd, or frightening, or laughable. This is partly until the rightless thing receives its rights. We cannot see it as anything but a thing for the use of us, those who are holding rights at the time. I do not think it too remote that we may come to regard the earth, as some have suggested, as one organism of which mankind is a functional part." And finally, the very last quote from a guy named Sam Smith. He wrote a book in Washington, D.C. called Why Bother? Because things are so bad, we're faced with all these pressing problems, why bother doing anything? Why not just sit back, read a book, go to a movie? And he wrote, quote, "Our predicament makes life simpler. We have clearly lost what we have lost. We can give up our futile efforts to preserve the illusion and turn our energies instead to the construction of a new time. It is this willingness to walk away from the seductive power of the present that first divides the mere reformer from the rebel. Above all, we must understand that leaving the toxic waves of the present, we are healing ourselves, our places, and our planet. We rebel not as a last act of desperation, but as a first act of creation." Thank you. And now, it's my pleasure, I think, you know, I've met quite a few nature photographers over the past couple of years, but I think John takes the cake. He's the best nature photographer I think that we've seen his. He's the best nature photographer I think that we've seen his work of, and I'd like to introduce him and have him come up. I spent some time on the river with him yesterday.
Hello, Commissioners, and thank you. Our premise today is simple. If the state of Florida was truly committed to protecting our waters, we wouldn't be here today. But that's not the world that we live in, and so we gather to discuss the case for the rights of nature. I believe this is an idea whose time has come. So let's dive in. The year is 2018. It's another summer of slime, and I'm here on the Kalusahatchee, the river of my childhood. I had to go to South Florida to see for myself. I'm not a scientist, or a lawyer, or an expert. I'm just a guy with a camera and a canoe and a broken heart. Everywhere I look, sickness hangs in the air. Florida's world-famous waters are making worldwide news. Heading east, algae enshrouds Lake Okeechobee. And it's clearly visible from space. And then it's on to the St. Lucie River. I'm in the groove now. I'm a crime scene photographer, and slime is the crime. There's trouble in paradise. Dogs are dying from this stuff. Links to diseases like Parkinson's and Alzheimer's emerge. The publisher of Florida Sportsman says, "It smells like death." Red tide spreads up the Gulf Coast to Sarasota Bay and beyond. Florida is in the grips of the worst water crisis in state history. The governor says, "Something must be done," and promptly does nothing to stop the pollution at its source. The following spring, in 2019, concerned legislators convene at the Capitol and say, "Something must be done," and then promptly do nothing to stop the pollution at its source. But a few weeks later, a ray of hope emerges. A member of our local legislative delegation addresses the crisis in a Gainesville Sun op-ed. His message is strong and clear, and I quote, "Florida's environment is getting better, much better, and that is directly tied to the leadership of Florida." Finally, the good news that we have been waiting for. And so I grabbed my cameras last summer, and I headed out, and I went spring hopping. I went to more than a dozen springs on the Santa Fe, in the Itchitucknee, and the Swanee Rivers, and I went looking for evidence that our springs really are getting better. But I found no cause for celebration. And what I found broke my heart, and it pissed me off. To call our springs a biological desert would be an insult to healthy deserts everywhere. Many of our springs are aquatic wastelands. Our waters are a mess, and we know how we got here. Folks, this is not rocket science. This is hydrogeology 101. We're still pumping too much water out of the aquifer, and we're still dumping too much crap and fertilizer back in. Now, referring to our day yesterday, I am so proud to call Alachua County my home. And when visitors arrive, I love to show off the crown jewel of our natural wonders. And so with Thomas Lindsay in town as the keynote speaker for the Florida Rights of Nature Conference, a group of us went paddling yesterday on our beloved Santa Fe River. February in Florida, what a glorious day, huh? Our first stop was Post Springs, our county park. Remember, folks, we use this spring and our river to brand Alachua County. At Post Springs, Thomas Lindsay had his first-ever snorkeling experience in a Florida spring. And then we were on to Rum Island Springs. Remember, folks, our springs and our drinking water are one and the same. And here's Gilchrist Blue Springs, our newest state park. The pictures don't lie. I call bullshit on the denial caucus of the Florida Legislature. This is a portrait of the tragedy of the commons writ large, and denial is still the mightiest river in Florida. So how did we get here? And more importantly, how do we fix this? In crisis, there is opportunity, but first, let's consider the backstory. A long time ago, our political leaders, Republicans and Democrats in common cause, saw that Florida was headed down an unsustainable path. In 1971, Governor Ruben Askew declared ecological destruction in Florida is nothing less than economic suicide. A year later, the legislature passed environmental protection and growth management reforms that were hailed nationwide as models of wise governance. But in the decades that followed, the pendulum swung, and a new ethos took hold in Tallahassee. Environmental and growth management laws were recast as needless impediments to growth. Our social contract with the future gave way to magical thinking, and the table was set for the troubles that we face today. But Tallahassee still refuses to connect the dots and confront the damage done. In 2012, I co-created the Springs Eternal Project in the hope that the people might be moved to protect our waters if only they could see the changes that I've seen. Many of the pictures that you're seeing here today of impaired springs were included in the exhibit which opened at the Florida Museum. I returned to many of the springs I first fell in love with decades ago, and I paired side-by-side pictures of the identical view showing our waters in decline. The exhibit was viewed by hundreds of thousands at dozens of venues. I mailed catalogs to all the key decision-makers in Tallahassee, the governor, the cabinet, the DEP secretary, leaders of the House and the Senate. I wallpapered that town. And I really wanted to believe, they just don't understand, but this will make a difference. A few days later, the Senate president returned my catalog, along with a letter explaining that state law made him return what was considered a gift. Now, I get it that Senator Gardner was just playing by the rules, but really, it made me wonder, what does it say about political ethics in Florida when a legislator tells you that the rules won't allow him to accept a picture book showing the truth of our troubled waters? Even as the same rulebook allows legislators to accept millions of dollars in campaign contributions from the very industries they regulate? What's at play here, I believe, is more than just historical amnesia or a philosophical aversion to governmental oversight. The nut of the matter is this: It's hard to get a legislator to understand something when their campaign contributions depend on their not understanding it. Now, some may call this corruption, but here in America, we call this democracy. So the legislature is back in session again, and this time, they tell us they're really serious about tackling Florida's water problems. And they've introduced a bill they call the Environmental Protection Act of 2020. Well, great. Is this the year that Tallahassee finally gets real about protecting our waters? And so what do you suppose is the defining feature of this high-minded effort? You guessed it, let's stamp out the emerging scourge of rights of nature, and tomorrow will be a better day in Florida. So what about this rights of nature? And why has it attracted the attention of our concerned leaders in Tallahassee? At its heart, rights of nature acknowledges the self-evident truth that we can no longer ignore. We've been terrible stewards of our natural legacy, and the status quo has got to go. It's time to change the rules. The Florida Rights of Nature movement has taken off in the past year, and local initiatives are brewing in 14 counties. We're inspired by the movements that abolished slavery in the 1800s, extended voting rights to women a century ago, and only in our lifetime has recognized civil rights for all Americans. Here in Alachua County, Team Safe Boar launched a campaign to amend our county charter to legally enshrine the right of the Santa Fe River to exist, to flourish, and to thrive. At scores of public events over the past six months, thousands of voters have eagerly signed our petitions to put Safe Boar on the ballot. But to the surprise of no one, the legislature is now poised to preempt rights of nature across Florida. Let's be clear, local home rule is the heart and soul of democracy. Safe Boar team members went to a Senate committee meeting two weeks ago to speak out against this assault on the will of the people, and we got steamrolled. And so with preemption looking assured, why are these people smiling? Here's a hint: We didn't go to Tallahassee to beg. We went to the Capitol to speak forcefully for the right of community self-determination and a healthy environment, and we won't back down. We knew there would be pushback, because really, when has wealth or its enablers ever relinquished power for the good of the commons? Now, I will share with you a bit of what we heard during our time in Tallahassee. Senator Ben Albritton here is the man leading the charge to deny everyday Floridians the right to strengthen protections for beloved rivers across the state. The senator justified his stance by saying, and I quote, "Nature should not be elevated to the level of humans." Now, I want you to think about that. Nature shouldn't be elevated to the level of humans. We are the one species on our shared planet that is poised to trigger the sixth mass extinction, and this legislator wants to nominate us for the Better Than Nature Award. So yes, we in the Rights of Nature movement seek to change the law, and we're not giving up. More broadly, we seek a change in consciousness. In his State of the State address last month, Governor Ron DeSantis went after municipal wastewater spills, but he went mute on the industries that profit from polluting our The governor is supporting a bill called the Clean Waterways Act, but the bill prolongs agricultural best management practice that have been proven to be ineffective, and he sticks it to the public to pay to clean up after polluters. Should it be any surprise that this bill has the support of every major polluting industry in Florida? It is with deep gratitude that we honor the vital work of Florida farmers, and we want to be clear, we are not against ag. We are for clean water. Florida needs sustainable agriculture that is economically viable, and also socially responsible and ecologically sound. What kind of business intentionally profits from inflicting harm on its downstream neighbors? And what kind of government is complicit in enabling such a scheme? We can no longer afford that false choice between a healthy economy and a healthy environment. Will rights of nature have unintended consequences? No doubt. But if you're looking for predictable outcomes, I predict that business as usual will be our demise. Inside the silo of the legislature, the prevailing view is that polluters aren't the bad guys, right? Polluters are friends and campaign donors. They're part of the tribe. The people who go after polluters, hmm, those are the bad guys. And that's why water defenders are mocked and vilified for having the audacity to speak up for rights of nature. It's more ethical, it's more virtuous to protect the tribe than to protect the waters upon which we rely for our very survival. It's time to set aside our tribal differences and clean up the mess that we've made. Ethics. Ethics. Ethics is about choices, and our laws are a reflection of our values. What then does the state of our waters say about us? And what is our message to the future? What do I tell my grandson Ben here? What do I tell Ben as he considers the diminished springs of the Santa Fe River? Here's the kicker: The crap that you see befouling our waters, by and large, it's not illegal. This is, in essence, official state policy. We literally permitted this to happen. The sliming of Florida is the predictable, inevitable outcome of weak, unenforced, or nonexistent regulation. This is disaster by design. In the court of public opinion, we submit that this photographic compendium of crap constitutes irrefutable evidence of a high crime against nature. We hereby charge the state of Florida with environmental malfeasance in the first degree. Not only does Tallahassee refuse to fix the problem, Tallahassee is the problem, and that's why Florida needs rights of nature. Our waters are more than our economic lifeblood. Our waters are the spiritual lifeblood of Florida. And what Florida needs now is a renaissance of gratitude and wonder and reciprocity. And I say to everyone here today, now more than ever, Florida needs our love. We know that love is more than a feeling that we have today. Love is a commitment to tomorrow. The camera remembers what once was. Madison Blue Springs, 1987. And the camera reminds us what might, with wisdom and perseverance, someday be again. There's no guarantee here that rights of nature can save Florida. Fundamentally, though, the bigger question here is this: Can rights of nature save us? Can rights of nature save us from ourselves? A bill of rights for the river is a bill of rights for the future. It's the right thing to do. We have strayed from the path of right living, and there is, I believe, no finer way to honor the Creator than by protecting creation. And I will end my presentation with a question, a simple question. Nature is speaking. Are we listening? Are we listening? Commissioners, I want to thank you for all that you do to secure our public health, safety, and welfare, and may wisdom be our guide. Thank you.
Thank you, John. That was awesome, as always. And with that, what we'll do is we'll ask the Commissioners if they have any questions of the, of Mr. Lindsay, or of the Safe Boar folks, and Mr. Wheeler.
I think I need a moment of silence to absorb all of this. Thank you so much for your work from early on until now. I don't, what I would like to ask you, do you, if we, when we address this and pass this, what can we expect to see coming back from Tallahassee?
Well, it depends on the course of the preemption bills as they go, but the timeline that we're looking at at this point is, end of the legislature is March 13th, I believe. And if the legislature passes it, goes to the governor for signature. If that preemptive law is in place, you will see most likely action brought by private entities that are affected by the rights of nature provisions that you would either pass or the Charter Review Commission would move forward. And those legal actions will be based entirely on preemption, to say that you can't pass what you're trying to pass. Most of these rights of nature ordinances and charter amendments have severability clauses in them, which means that parts can be severed out. But I think what you're looking at is probably a frontal challenge to preemptive doctrine as a municipality. And like, we did a Law Review article on this last year about expanding that portal of municipal authority. But I think that's where you end up, is that if you move forward with a law, there will be a legal challenge to that law, frontally, without it being enforced yet. A frontal challenge comes in the door, and then you have to decide whether you're going to stand with the law, or whether you're going to move forward to defend the law on these new grounds. Because we don't think that, most of the legal defense around preemption for the past 25 years has been, let's find a crack, or somewhere around it, or some way that we're exempted from it. But there's never been really a frontal challenge to preemption, and I think Florida is ripe for that. There's enough disgruntlement. There's enough disgruntlement and dissent around preemptive doctrine. You may have seen it in the gun control ruling that came out, where the judge stripped out some preemptive provisions, some of the more noxious ones. I think that judges may be ready to hear that, but it means Olatchua County being willing to launch a new kind of legal defense, and we're happy to help with that in any respect, and help as this process moves forward on drafting, or putting you in touch with other communities, municipal officials who have passed the laws. Doug Shields, the former president of the city council, was here in Gainesville to speak at the P I E C conference, and we have about three dozen municipalities in the United States that have passed these rights of nature laws and have varying degrees of experience with enforcement around those laws.
What is, when you say frontal, I don't, I don't know what that is.
Challenging the authority of the state legislature to preempt you in certain circumstances. So generally, preemption is all encompassing in the U.S. So if the state, the state can pick and choose what you can do and define that. And there's really never been any substantive constraints on that power of the state, except to argue that it's not a good idea. So people go to Tallahassee and they say, well, please don't preempt us, and this is why it's not a good idea to do it. In the 1800s, for about 70 years, there was something recognized as the constitutional right of local community self-government, that communities could govern themselves and set higher standards than what the state sets. So the state would set the floor, but you guys would have the ability to move above the floor. Right now, it's recognized that the state can set a ceiling as well as a floor and keep you from even, even expanding or moving above the minimum floor of regulation that the state has set. So preemption by itself is not a bad thing, because it can be done for good things when the state sets higher standards. But unfortunately, the way it's recognized is that mostly it's used by major private economic actors who use the state legislature to prohibit you from doing something that's going to interfere with the activities of those major private economic actors. Somehow, there has to be a judicial constraint that comes from a confrontation between municipality and state to limit that power. The state legislature's not going to limit itself, and power doesn't work that way. It has to be stopped, limited, and constrained in some way. And that's the frontal action, I think, the defense in this case, if you guys move forward with something along these lines, to make the argument that the legislature acts unconstitutionally when it attempts to set a ceiling rather than just a floor, to not allow you to exceed that floor that they've set, but to move above that to expand and exceed those minimum regulations that are set at the state level. So right now, you don't have the power to do that, but I think you have to create that power, because the rights of nature is not just about a new environmental protection system, it's about democracy and democratic control at the local level and home rule.
So if we take something like this on, and actually in fact, challenge the legislature, you know, is that a way to be a stronger advocate than for what we're trying to do? I mean, have you seen that in challenges in groups that you're working with, that somehow that's kind of forced the hand?
Yes, it provides you a fertile, real confrontation in real time between people trying to do something to protect ecosystems and the state entity trying to take that away. So it makes it real in people's brains, because sometimes when we say preemption, people doze off, because it's just this airy-fairy, you know, 30,000-foot legal theory, but it's not. It's actually exercised very precisely. And in this case, it's happened in Florida faster than any other place. So in Ohio, it took eight years for the state legislature to step in to try to preempt things like the Lake Erie Bill of Rights. Here, it took eight months. So it's been very fast, very quick, and the corporate boys learn what needs to be done, what works in different areas. But I think you need that real-time confrontation. And I think in Florida, there's also an opportunity that we talked about yesterday, to bring all of the entities that have been preempted over all these issues as interveners into an action, into a fight that's been picked by one municipality over one issue, and therefore take it on as a preemptive doctrine entirely. Because again, the legislature's not going to do it voluntarily. They're not going to say, hey, we don't think we should have this power, and we're going to constrain ourselves. It doesn't work that way. And so you have to take it, you have to constrain it yourselves, and the only way to do that is through a real confrontation. So I think when you, when you decide to move forward, or if you move forward with rights of nature stuff, rights of the Santa Fe River, as it's been outlined, Orange County is was not just the rights of the Wakava and Econlock Hatchie, but now it's been expanded to include all waters within Orange County. So it's much broader than just the two rivers. But no matter how you move forward, it's an understanding that you're picking a fight, this is a real fight, and that the fight needs to result in a real constraint on legislative preemptive authority. Otherwise, you guys can't really do anything. So you can either accept the state of affairs and go home, not do anything, or move forward, pick a fight, and then challenge this on a broader scale. I think that's probably what needs to happen, that's what we've been working on.
Is that financially costly, to the point that it would make it hard for a community to do that?
It's hard for smaller municipalities to do that, because they don't have the financial resources. And we've, of course, over the years, been through the various stages of litigation with these different municipal entities. And your insurance carrier will chime in, and you'll go through that whole process. But having a coherent legal strategy is the thing, because we can say, well, preemption's bad, but that's not good enough. You need a coherent legal strategy. And I think the legal strategy flows from this constitutional right of the people of Olatchua, in this case, to actually decide what their own community looks like. And the state legislature can't set ceiling-preemption limits on that. They can't say, you can't do X in your pursuit of that goal. And I think that's the coherent legal theory, drawing on the 70 years of right of local community self-government stuff that used to exist in the United States from 1840 to 1910, when the battle between the corporations and communities was lost, and the corporations won with their instatement of Dillon's Rule rather than some other test or legal theory that allows municipalities more room to roam in terms of lawmaking. So I think that's the ultimate war, and these are battles around that war, about constraining the power of legislative preemption.
One more question, sir. The, are there people like you working in Florida? Are, do you, are you, do you all have a coalition of folks nationwide, worldwide? It sounds like even that, that we have access to here in Florida without having to bring you here from Pennsylvania?
Yeah, so 48 hours ago, I think the Florida Rights of Nature Network was officially formed, which is representatives from different districts in Florida who are working on rights of nature stuff. Our door is always open. They have their own network of pro bono lawyers that are working with the network. And so they're pretty advanced at this point in terms of infrastructure and running these various initiative efforts. I'm actually in Spokane, Washington at this point, where we have assisted the city to, people within the city to move forward with a Bill of Rights over the last couple of years that would have granted, recognized Spokane River as having rights. And it came within a half a percentage point of passing a couple of years ago. And so there's resources, there's a global alliance for the rights of nature, which has international lawyers that we work with. We have a network of U.S. lawyers that we work with as well. So all those resources and expertise, we're happy to make available to you, depending on which direction you decide to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut, former state legislator.
Thank you, and welcome to Olatchua County, and thank you for your presentation. I guess, I have some questions. So if the preemption passes, and you just stated earlier, we'll fight the legislature. So my question is, how would we fight the legislature with preemption, which they have the authority to do? And how do we fight that? And what will it cost us? So I mean, that's the first question I have.
Yep. So it's a good question, we'll tackle that one first. So the, when, to challenge state preemptive power, you have to have a specific confrontation take place that then evidences itself in the courts. So just to bring this down from the 30,000-foot level to practicality, and not assuming anything that you guys are going to be doing, but using that as an example. Let's say you move forward tomorrow to actually pass an ordinance, draft and adopt an ordinance that recognizes a rights of the Santa Fe River. So a Santa Fe River Bill of Rights, similar to what's been circulated, is being circulated currently, the Safe Bore Initiative here. And that gets passed. What you're going to see is an upfront challenge from some entity that's affected by the law. So some entity that uses the Santa Fe Rivers, uses the springs, might be Nestle, might be another company, might be some other entity that's affected by the law that you've passed. They will then bring an action, and that action will be brought against the county. That's how this works. And so they'll file suit, it will be an injunctive relief action most likely, to get a court to nullify the law that you've passed, the rights of nature law that you've passed. You will then have to decide whether to defend that law. In some places, the threat of the legal action's been enough that municipalities get so afraid that they repeal the law that they've passed. Or they'll enter into some kind of settlement agreement with the company in which they repeal the law that's just been passed. So that's an out for municipalities who don't want to engage in litigation, don't want to openly challenge stuff, that they take that exit ramp. Assuming that you don't, then you're into a litigation process, likely be filed in federal court, which is where most of these challenges have been brought. The county would then either hire legal counsel, use your in-house municipal counsel, we can provide expertise on brief drafting and answers and all the stuff that comes with complaints. Your insurance carrier will become involved and give you counsel as well and represent you. I mean, that's the process that happens with litigation. And then the key again is, you don't engage in litigation unless you have a coherent legal strategy to win the case. And the coherent legal strategy, I think here, has to be a frontal constraint, seeking a frontal constraint on the authority of the legislature to preempt you. You're arguing to a judge that the legislature acts unconstitutionally in certain places when they exercise preemptive authority. And in this case, you already would have set the platform by passing the ordinance or other law in place, and arguing that that passes muster, that the state legislature acts unconstitutionally when they attempt to preempt something of the nature that you've passed here. And then that goes to a judge, judge who makes a decision can be appealed, I mean, you go through that whole process. In terms of cost, if it's just an injunctive relief kind of action and not a monetary one, you're in a better place, but you're still going to have attorney's fees, you're going to have all the stuff that comes with that. We can save time and energy and money in some ways, and this network in Florida can do the same by using pro bono counsel to assist you to do it. It also depends on how big you want to make it. If you just want to stand alone, or do you want other municipalities like Coral Gables, other places that have passed stuff that has been preempted, Miami perhaps, and for them to come as well to make this a more frontal thing? That's all a political decision on your part, as is the passage of something at all. But I think the people with pitchforks are starting to come around these issues, because folks have worked on environmental protection for the last 30 or 40 years, I think they thought that we'd be in a much different place now than we are. And so they're looking to you to actually provide a new platform, and I think that's what this is.
Okay, I guess my follow-up question, has there been any cities or counties across the country challenged this preemption, and what was their success?
Yes, but not in the way that we're talking about now. The municipal lawyers, and I'm a lawyer, of course, so when I say these things, take it with a grain of salt, but the municipal lawyers are sometimes the problem, in that they're used to challenging things like preemption by trying to find cracks in something or going around it. They validate the authority of the legislature to preempt the municipality, but they just argue that maybe in this certain circumstance, that it's not preempted somehow, that they try to find the way around it. It's almost like separate but equal. You know, the way that lawyers argue certain things is to accept preemption as a sacred cow that has been around forever, will be around forever, and we just have to accept it as a judicial doctrine, yet they're trying to find certain ways to go around it. I think municipalities going through it has been very rare, for municipalities to argue that we should have the authority that can't be preempted, can't be constrained by the state legislature in terms of going above standards. But breaking it down to snuff is this, the argument that municipalities should be able to adopt more stringent standards than the state, that's the key, that's the essence of this, was made recently by the city of Toledo, who hired special counsel to defend the Lake Erie Bill of Rights. They've made these arguments now in court that preemption cannot be effective or cannot be exercised in certain cases like these. That decision hasn't come out yet, the argument was just heard a little while ago. And so it's been very rare for municipalities to take a stand on preemption frontally. It's been very common for them to try to find cracks and exceptions and those types of things. I don't think that's working anymore, so.
Okay, and with the Santa Fe River, I guess my question is, is that upstream, you have Bradford County, and if something like a phosphate mine happens and the pollution travels down the river, what authority, as me as a home rule county, and Bradford County being a home rule county, what authority do I tell them?
Yes.
To stop doing this in the state?
Excellent question. That's usually the best one we get in the different places where we go. We believe that there's an extrajurisdictional component to rights of nature, that if a river obtains certain rights within a municipal jurisdiction, that you can actually begin to affect activities upstream that violate the rights when the river flows through the municipal jurisdiction that has the law. So again, from 30,000 feet downwards, in the city of Pittsburgh, they had a situation where there were upstream frackers, so fracking companies upstream that were dumping fracking chemicals into the Three Rivers, that when the Three Rivers obtained rights within the municipal jurisdictions, that that gives it the standing to actually reach outside of the municipal jurisdiction to affect those things that are happening upstream. And in fact, in Toledo, the lawsuit that was brought against the Lake Erie Bill of Rights was actually brought by someone in the watershed, not within the city of Toledo. So in other words, assuming that it could be enforced outside of the city of Toledo, this plaintiff walked in the door, because they're only affected outside the city. So I think there's an extrajurisdictional component to that. But the, one of the problems you run into is that, even though we've been doing this work for 14 years officially, and 20 somewhat in addition to that, is that, the good news is, you're at the beginning of the beginning with rights of nature jurisprudence in the United States. The bad news is, you're at the beginning of the beginning. So you kind of make the path by walking it in some ways. You have experience now from Ecuador, where 60 of these cases have been brought. You have experience in other parts of the world, but in the U.S., it is still very young. It's a young thing. And so the good news is, you have the ability to control some of it, whether you go extrajurisdiction or extrajurisdictionally or not. A lot of the problems that are happening in these areas are not problems created by the municipality in the area passing it, or the community or the people, but actually happening outside. And that's been a big issue in different places about what its reach is, which is where that question goes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cornell, then the attorney.
Did you want to answer anything related to what Commissioner Chestnut was talking about?
So, Mr. Lindsay, Sylvia Torres, I'm the county attorney, one of the problems.
Correct.
Yeah, you're, thank you for being here. You are, you're not licensed in Florida, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I feel the need to expand on one of your answers, that in the area of express preemption, your costs are going to be your attorney's fees and your costs, and the attorney's fees and costs on the other side, once you're put on notice now pursuant to the recent legislation that was passed. And then I do, I do actually have some questions, but I will hold them until the commissioners are done.
Okay, sorry I was late, and I will certainly go back and watch what I missed. So if I touch something that you've already touched on, just say, do your homework, Commissioner. I'm more interested in the specific authority that you were just touching on with Commissioner Chestnut, an ordinance versus the charter.
Right.
And how you would view the, some sort of clarifying language in our charter versus something that we just passed.
Yeah, so there are pros and cons to both of those approaches. Generally, the approach in the U.S. has been to embed it as deeply as possible into municipal law, which means a higher status of the charter mechanism rather than ordinance. An ordinance can of course be reversed at any time, successive Board of County Commissioners can repeal it. There's different ways in which it's not as deeply vested than in a charter mechanism or vehicle. We think authority exists for both, and whether it's found under the basic public health, safety, and welfare material authority, or under more explicit provisions dealing with environmental protection. But generally, the preference has been to embed it further into the law, so it takes a vote of the people to repeal it, makes it harder for a judicial, in the eyes of a judge, makes it harder to overturn it, because it holds a higher status than municipal law than a regular ordinance.
Sure, and so I guess a question for our attorney is, if it was in our charter, some sort of expressed authority, would that have a higher standing than the state constitution or a law of legislatures from Tallahassee to, because as I understand it, our charter is enforceable as long as it doesn't conflict with the state's state constitution or the state legislature's laws?
Right. So our charter is the law of Olatchua County, so long as it doesn't conflict with general law, and what's within it has to be within your authority as granted pursuant to the constitution. And the constitution grants you currently, by its terms, home rule authority, broad home rule authority as a charter county that is not inconsistent with general law. That's the language of the charter. The question that's being presented to you appears to be that regardless of what the terms of the constitution says, you have some inherent authority that isn't in the terms of the constitution to legislate an area... terms of the constitution to legislate in areas even though the legislature has told you you don't. And I'm, I'm not aware of any case law in Florida that supports that in any recent time. And in, in that vein, the question really is, is the problem, our charter, is the problem of the state constitution as far as what local county's authority is? And then why would we be spending time on a charter when, by the terms of the constitution, that's not within our authority, when we could be spending time on amending the state constitution to either give us that authority or to create some sort of a public trust doctrine that would endow us with the rights and the responsibilities to care for the environment?
And so, on that note, where are rights given to corporations? In the state constitution, or where does that happen?
Corporate law is done at both state and federal level. I'm, and again, that's another question, and I've been holding my questions, but I'm not aware of local governments creating personhood in the things that you described, like ships and corporations.
Right, so maritime law gives ships, under federal law.
That is federal law.
Gives ships the authority to be a plaintiff or a person under that system of law. We have guardian ad litem provisions, which basically have children being appointed trustees and guardians to look out for the best interests of the child.
Right, that's state law.
Right, right, right. And so, we're talking about an expansion of municipal portal of lawmaking here, that's based almost entirely on the constitutional right of people, not you, not a constitutional right of the municipality, but the constitutional right of the people of the municipality to collectively come together to assert their right of self-governance.
So, if we move forward with a concept that was, like I assume that nature has rights, and it's our job to protect it, and so I assume that. And if I were to make an argument that they should have at least the same rights as a created entity, like a corporation, could we go down the, go down the theory of lakes, rivers and streams, or nature, or however we define that, shall have at least the same rights as a corporation?
Yes, although the parallel doesn't work in one respect, which is, you're talking about corporations have First Amendment free speech rights, for example, as persons under the law in the United States. So it's what allowed them to strike down campaign finance laws in the Citizens United case that you may, that folks may know about.
Yep.
So, a river having First Amendment rights to free speech doesn't really work. So due process, equal protection, other things that corporations have. Ecosystems really have to have rights specific to that ecosystem, like a right to flow, sustainable recharge, right to exist, a right to flourish, a right to thrive.
So the free speech is a right that messes that?
Yes, so ecosystems are not people. They're persons, they need to be persons for the, the purpose of getting into a courtroom, i.e. courts can only resolve disputes between persons, not objects. So you have to switch ecosystems into that category of being persons for purposes of crossing the threshold of the courthouse door. But the substantive rights that an ecosystem would have, have to be different from what a corporation, for example, has. That's why the language from these different international and municipal jurisdictions is all about the right to exist, thrive, flourish, those types of rights. So we're talking about personhood is about getting in the courthouse door. The substantive rights have to be different from a corporation, but the alignment, the parallel is there. A lot of people say, well, corporations have rights, why shouldn't rivers have rights? Because as a philosophy professor at the PIEC conference said, they're functional fictions, that we create them to align with our own assumptions about what those entities are, and they serve a functionality. You and I may assume nature has rights, but it doesn't, under our system of law. Our system of Western law doesn't recognize that. Tribal law is a little different, that we've worked with the tribes on, but Western law does not recognize nature as anything other than property. If you own it, you have the power to destroy it. This is about changing by law and shifting and transitioning it to something else. And the only other parallel that I can think of is prior movements in the United States, like the abolitionists. African-Americans were property at one point in the US. Women were property, for some purposes still are, under US law. They had to transition and transform from being property into being rights-bearing entities. That's what we're talking about here, is transitioning ecosystems like the Santa Fe River and Post Springs from being property into being rights-bearing entities. And that's a shift that overall, the law has not made yet, but it's starting to poke up through these municipal efforts to run these bills of rights for ecosystems across the United States.
So, one more question, you know. I also understand that under the state of Florida, outstanding Florida waters are owned by everyone. And so, is there a legal theory to say that, to the extent that outstanding Florida waters are owned by everyone, that they are owned by the public, and in the public's trust and the ownership of them is the same as the public?
It's, that's tough, because the difference between rights of nature and ecosystems having legally enforceable rights that they can enforce on their own, or through community groups that care about that ecosystem, is different from nature as being commonly owned property. When we talk about a public trust, we're talking about commonly owned property, but it doesn't change the status of ecosystems from being property, it's just that they're commonly owned. And if I was in the 1840s as a slave, I'm not sure I'd care whether I was owned by one slave owner, or whether I was owned by the entire community. I'm still property. That can be done with it, whatever those ownership entities choose to do with me. So, the public trust and common ownership stuff doesn't necessarily get us to where we need to go in terms of shifting ecosystems from being property to being something else.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Madam Attorney.
Mr. Lindsey, can you speak to the constitutional amendment question?
I can, it's a viable option, but you're talking about a process that requires millions of dollars and petition signatures, I think equalling, I don't know, last time I looked, 200,000 signatures of some kind. I don't think change happens of that magnitude unless you have a bunch of efforts at the local level who are forcing that change to happen. And you guys have an opportunity here to blueprint that change. So, we've run constitutional amendments in other states, in Colorado, in Oregon, in New Hampshire, all proposals for new constitutional amendments. Some of those are, have been not qualified yet, but collecting signatures like Safe Board. Other ones have been a bipartisan effort of legislators, like in New Hampshire, Republicans and Democrats coming together to co-sponsor something. But in reality, for those efforts to grow and be adopted, it means either the state legislature coming to some kind of revelation about nature, or it means driving up from below with doing the signature collection, all that kind of stuff. And that only happens if you have enough local efforts to really hold the line, who have blueprinted enough of this so that it doesn't get diluted on its way up the ladder. So, I think eventually you're looking at a state constitutional amendment here, probably to constrain preemption and drive rights of nature, but I don't think we're there yet in terms of the heft that's needed. And in fact, I just read a bill yesterday where the state legislature is trying to make it harder to qualify state constitutional amendments now. So, Florida's the only state I've been in, in which one signature, one petition page, which was crazy to me, and just the cost of replicating the photocopies for the petitions themselves, in some counties are running $12,000 just to run enough hard copy petitions. And so, it's difficult for me to see where the financial wherewithal or the blueprint and the numbers are going to come from to run a constitutional amendment today, but I think that's the, one of the eventual results.
So, setting, setting preemption aside, in the absence of a preemption, what authority does a local government have to create a person?
So what's interesting here is that the fact that House Bill 1199 and the Senate Bill have been introduced is essentially a recognition by the state legislature that you have that power now. You can't take away a power that doesn't exist. They're actually recognizing that the power exists and they're seeking to take it away. That's what the bills are about. So in some ways, they're recognizing, even though we may not, they're recognizing that the power exists and they're seeking to strip it. That's what those, the House and Senate Bill is. So in a weird kind of ironic way, they're actually recognizing the authority exists and order to strip it, that's what they're recognizing now. In terms of creating a person, that's not what these bills do, that's not what the laws do. They're about recognizing that things like the Santa Fe River have certain rights, but they're not saying that those things are persons. You won't find that in the Santa Fe Bill of Rights, for example. What you'll find is exist, flourish, thrive, those standards that are in there. Innate in all of that, of course, is that Santa Fe River has to have a way into the courts. So, using the, the form of the concept of personhood to actually enter the courthouse doors is inevitably part of all this, but we can't treat the Santa Fe River as a person for purposes of substantive rights, which really need to be grounded in, right to exist, flourish, evolve, those types of things. And I'll also add this, which is that, in a parallel to the civil rights movement in the United States, is that in the beginning, you had three young African-American males who sat down at a lunch counter in Greensboro, North Carolina. And they had no idea that days later, there'd be 300 of them. They had no clue. Somebody has to go first, and somebody actually has to openly challenge the law and actually build new law. That's what eventually happened with the civil rights movement, of course. But those three scared kids that sat at the lunch counter didn't have anything except toothbrushes to bring to the prison with them, because they knew they were going to get arrested and the full structure of criminal law was going to crack down on them. They knew that. What you need in Florida is folks to go first. Orange County is, I think, going first. They have another vote in a couple of weeks about that second reading for putting it on the ballot for the Charter Review Commission. I think Alachua County stands in a good position to join them in terms of being first in this. But somebody has to go first, somebody has to advance a new legal theory, somebody has to constrain the legislature, and we can sit back and hope others do it, but in the end, it's going to be, I think, up to a small number of people in a small number of places to actually be the first ones to go.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Other than not recognizing state and federal permits that have been issued in our local jurisdiction, what would, what would enforcement action look like under this?
Yeah, it's excellent, excellent question. There's only been a couple in the United States, we've brought them. They've been intervention actions by the ecosystems. So, there have been, the best way to explain it is, a little place called Grant Township in western Pennsylvania, had a proposal for a frac wastewater well to be built within the municipality. They didn't want it there, and they also wanted to protect their watershed that existed within the municipality. So they passed a law that banned the frac wastewater injection well, essentially overriding the state permit that had been issued, the DEP permit that had been issued for the facility. To our amazement, the state DEP actually suspended their permit process to recognize the local ordinance that had been passed. First time I've ever seen it, that the state was responding to a municipality's passage of an ordinance. So in essence, restraining some of their own regulatory power in response to that ordinance that was passed at the local level. That, that action, that passage of the ordinance brought a lawsuit. The lawsuit came in from a company called PGE, which filed a suit to force their frac wastewater injection well into the township. The township decided to defend the ordinance, went into court, and at the same time that was happening, the community group that was working on behalf of the watershed protection brought in intervention action to intervene in the lawsuit. So it wouldn't just be against the municipality, but the watershed would actually appear in court. So we had a bunch of interesting telephone hearings with the judge, in which the ecosystem participated in those hearings on the phone, so actually ecosystem participation in that process. I think here, if Alachua County passed something, it'd be very interesting to see the Santa Fe River as an intervening party, brought in as a separate entity, to perhaps share the load of the litigation, but also to make sure that the river's voice was heard within that particular process. So, in the US, it's been very sparse on those kinds of actions, but an enforcement action on its own, which would be separate from the defense run by Alachua County, could be an action brought purely on behalf of the Santa Fe River against a polluter. So, in Toledo, the action has been convoluted because the agribusiness interest was one that sued the city first, but if the city chose to enforce it against those agribusiness corporations, factory farm operations and others in the watershed to protect the ordinance itself, that would be an enforcement action. An enforcement action would be anything brought against another entity that is violating the right of the river to exist, thrive, flourish, these constitutional type standards are embedded in the law. So, the sky's the limit, but basically doing things that you're constrained from doing now, that this would, under this legal theory at least, release you to do that additional ecosystem protection efforts.
Briefly, because I wanted to... Sure, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. No, no, I just wanted to ask, in terms of a violator or a polluter, how would the county fight it? And I think I stated earlier about a different county, in terms of that different county is polluting it. So how do we, do we sue them? What do, I mean, what is the actions, or what should we do to try to prevent it? And then, I really want to know the legal cost to all of this, because that becomes an issue in, in terms of how we look at our budget and how we do our budget every year. So, what is the cost, the legal cost to challenge any of this? And also, in terms of the Burt Harris property, which give people property rights, how do you deal with property rights in this issue too?
Yeah, so in terms of enforcement, it envisions lawsuits. And lawsuits not just brought by the county necessarily, but also providing legal standing to the community to bring those suits. So it anticipates and envisions private litigation that the county is not a part of, in which community groups and organizations and residents would actually bring suits to enforce these provisions. But I would also say that I've seen a huge area of law, a huge area of action outside of direct litigation actions, ones based on pressure that have been created by the laws. So, Pittsburgh going to their neighbors and saying, don't do this because we have a rights of nature law here in the city of Pittsburgh, we have this law in place. And that has curtailed several projects that would otherwise come in. So sometimes just the threat of having the platform and the ability to do something with that platform causes that kind of pressure to happen, in which you don't have to bring suit. But Alachua County sending a letter to a neighbor saying, not only is this not a good idea, but you're violating our ordinance here, our home rule charter in Alachua County by doing this, and there may be consequences to that. So, instead of just relying on persuasion, it gives you another platform to do that kind of thing. As for cost, I don't know. In, in Florida, as has been raised, I'm not a Florida licensed lawyer at this point, so nothing I've said can be taken as legal advice in this matter. But that's something you're going to have to feather out and figure out, whether you can afford to enforce it once it's in place, but also with an understanding that you're releasing private groups with a platform of sorts so that they can begin enforcement. And one of the problems over the past 40 years has been a limitation on standing of individual groups. In fact, we just heard a story on the river yesterday about the Sierra Club of Florida being challenged in standing to represent ecosystems in the state. This releases some of that standing stuff, at least under this legal theory, to allow other people and more people to stand in the shoes of the river, because we're contemplating these enforcement actions would be the Santa Fe River versus Nestle, or Santa Fe River versus another company, or Santa Fe River versus another violator. And those actions could be brought by the community group that's empowered by your platform to do so. So it may not be cost to the county if a community organization is willing to take on those costs and move forward. The Burt Harris stuff I can't opine on, because that's really more specific Florida law stuff, but the, the one thing that gets complicated about these laws is that they are a constraint on certain property rights, in some situations and some examples, because what you're talking about is nature not as property anymore. So your right as a property owner may not include the right to destroy the property or the ecosystem. If the law under which you're operating is the law, it gives rights, gives the Santa Fe River, for example, the right to exist, or other ecosystems the right to exist, you can't have a right to exist cohabitate with the right of a property owner to destroy the ecosystem. You have two competing systems at that point. So that has to be resolved. And I don't know how that gets resolved under Florida law, all we know is that something else has to change, something has to change, something has to replace that system, because otherwise you're going to be looking at places like Post Springs being destroyed. I mean, I'm convinced of that, especially after yesterday.
Thank you.
Now we have a question or comment from our Charter Review Attorney.
Thank you very much, Chairman. My name's Wade Vose, I'm the General Counsel for the Alachua County Charter Review Commission. I'm another one of those problems you were mentioning there before. But please understand when I'm asking these questions, two things. First off, you have an exceedingly able county attorney, so I can't give you all any legal advice. I'm just sharing some of the thoughts that I've had when I've been working through to evaluate this, to give legal advice to your Charter Review Commission.
Are you involved with Orange County?
Not this time. Yeah, I was, I was General Counsel in 2011 and 2012 and 15, 16 for the Orange County Charter Review Commission. I am not this third time around. I have been following it with some interest, particularly with regard to this issue.
And Cliff, Cliff Shepard, I think, is one of the primary people over in Orange County.
That's right, yeah, Cliff is. So, the other thing I want to mention, just at the outset, is please understand that in questioning anything with regard to this, I am not questioning... in questioning anything with regard to this, I am not questioning the goals. Mr. Moran, in particular, was exceedingly compelling with the goals and the needs to deal with these matters. My job in representing the Charter Review Commission is to help them evaluate whether or not this tool, because this is a tool, okay? The Safe More Amendment or any other legal apparatus that's put in, it's a tool to accomplish a particular goal. And so my job is to help them evaluate whether or not this or something like that could be a useful tool to accomplish these goals. And then another job that they have, and I have to help them with, is explaining to the public what it means. And that's an exceedingly important issue when it comes to charter amendments or any referendum that's going on the ballot. That's an obligation that I think the CRC, and we take seriously. So, and I've got pages of notes here, I'm not going to hit any of it by any stretch. I just wanted to throw out a couple of things that have been jumping out at me that I'm still working through. The first is a fundamental one. It goes to the question, Commissioner, that you had asked before, charter amendment versus ordinance, all right? I've done this all over the state. I've represented six different county Charter Review Commissions among the 20 charter counties. And I went back, just out of curiosity, and reviewed all 20 county charters. I can't find a single instance of a charter provision that purports to regulate private activity. Okay? And let me say that again. And let me say it a different way. County charters have as their object government, regulating how government works, how governments interact with each other, how the people interact with government, all right? There are examples of where county charters grant rights, okay? There are even examples in the Miami Day Charter where they have fooled around with the traditional standing requirements, okay? So there's a lot of case law in precedent there. The issue becomes, and it's breaking new ground, it's new ground that I haven't found yet any support for it in the law of the state, for having regulations of private activity in a charter, as opposed to ordinances. That's what you do every day in ordinances. These are different instruments, okay? Put that fundamental issue aside. Among various concerns that jump out in this formulation, the fundamental one I would raise, and it's one we were talking about a little bit before, is one of, and this isn't meant as a criticism, it's just a legal term, vagueness, okay? What I see, when we're looking at this, we're effectively taking two relatively brief paragraphs stating the rights of the Santa Fe River and of residents of Alachua County, and taking that exceedingly brief statement of rights, just a couple clauses, and replacing whole big, fat, thick stacks of environmental regulations. In some places, perhaps exceeding them, other applies, we're not sure. The concern in the law comes when we start asking, "What is it this will accomplish?" And so that's a question we have to answer to the public when it's going to referendum. And we have to answer it when a judge asks, and when anyone who's regulated by it asks. How will a property owner, or a developer, or a farmer, or a rancher, look at these brief paragraphs and know what is required of them? How will a judge look at it and know whether or not those folks have complied with it? And the law requires that laws regulating private activity not be vague, not be legally vague, okay?
Can I speak to that? Isn't the answer to that do no harm, protecting what exists?
If that is precisely what it's meant to be, basically, every single regulation, I mean, if this is a brief way of saying, every single regulation we have in Florida law is saying the nutrient load of this, you know, the maximum nutrient load of this is X, and the maximum of this is X, and maximum of this is X. If it's really just meant to be, all of these are changed to zero, it might be clearer to just say, "All these things are changed to zero," I guess is what I'm saying. Because, and again, this is not, this is not my final determination on any of this. This is, this is the issue I've been working through. I would just throw out, as a thought, that, and again, this is not an endorsement, legal endorsement of it, but the Orange County Amendment that they've been working through started with language similar to this. And it evolved substantially to incorporate a number of very clear definitions. A lot of them stolen from state law, okay? But very clear definitions, so that as an attorney or an environmental engineer, you could sit down and more precisely evaluate exactly what it's going to mean. So that is the fundamental concern I have. Now, we do have areas, when we're creating rights and constitutions and so on, we have terms like due process and equal protection and so on. Again, similar to what I was mentioning about county charters, those are rights as against the government. The government can't deny us due process. They can't deny us equal protection. So you sort that out in court. My concern is, as it's currently phrased, and I don't know how to explain this to the public, that effectively the environmental regulations will be not sorted out in a manual of regulations, but that we sort it out in court. Whatever somebody can convince a judge is what this paragraph or two means is what is going to be the binding environmental law on this developer, this rancher, and so on. That's separate and apart from a number of the other preemption issues that I see. Just as an example, assume for a second that statute doesn't pass, or this bill running doesn't pass. We've got, a huge issue here is going to be the Florida Right to Farm Act, which I know you all are familiar with, and Mr. Horenn mentioned a very concerning term in their best management practice and all this stuff, and it gives them exemptions for all manner of things. I don't disagree that there are substantial issues there. The issue becomes running into those existing preambitions, even if this bill doesn't get out of committee and get passed by the legislature. I wanted to throw those things out, again, not as criticism, but I'm hoping to hear answers I can work with. Because I know my Charter Review Commission wants to do something along these lines. I'm trying to help them get to the best tool possible.
Thank you very much. Particularly, there were collisions with other things like right to farm.
Yeah, just a short response, because most of my experience at this point has been the Orange County Charter Commission. It's been six long months. I'm not sure how you do the Charter Review Commission work for all these counties, because it drives me crazy.
Not all at the same time.
Right, right, right. So all these questions have come up and been responded to within the Orange County Charter Review Commission process. Not all of them have sharp answers. I mean, as lawyers, we want yes or no, or at least gradations of those. But they spent two months just dealing with vagueness issues. And I don't think the Orange County Charter Amendment really came out the best that it could. In other words, the version that they have, I think, lost a lot of meaning from beginning to the end. And most of that was because of, not only the county lawyer chiming in with material, but it got diluted somewhat through the process. But they spent long periods of time on those issues. And they see it more as establishing constitutionally-based theories for environmental protection, along the lines of due process and equal protection. I can't really speak to the private regulation stuff. I've seen charters with all kinds of stuff in them. Pittsburgh has regulation of private entities at the yin yang at the city level. But I guess the form here, the only guideline is basically how deep folks want to drive it into the DNA. Your charter is really the source code or DNA for the county. And if rights for things that we depend on for air and water are not in those, I think it brings it back, degrades it slightly, to just being treated as an ordinance, which puts it in the same category as noxious weed ordinances and other things. And so that's more of a philosophy thing. I don't, I don't think it's a stopper just to say, "Nobody's done it yet, and we can't." I think you have to give advice to folks to say, "Nobody may have done it yet, but, you know, you are on a path to do it." I think the role of the lawyers is fairly limited in this conversation, unfortunately, or fortunately, in that the Charter Review Commission in Orange was pretty independent. They said, "We want X." And the job of the lawyer was to say, "These are some of the problems that may come up as you try to do X, but it's in the form of informed disclosure that we're giving that to you." Because in the end, it's a political decision for these folks to make, especially the Charter Review Commission itself is a political entity. And so they use the best legal advice that they have to make decisions, but in the end, it's their decision to make. So I don't, I don't think there are really any sharp answers that I can add to that.
Sounds like you know our Charter Review Commission as well. Mr. Vose.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the time.
Appreciate it. What I'm going to do now is open the floor for members of the public to come up and address us. And just as a reminder, if you're a member of one of the county advisory boards, the six boards that we noticed, just let us know that. And I'm interested primarily in hearing specific questions that you think we need to hear, or the Charter Review Commission needs to hear, or our attorneys need to hear. And what I'd like to do is, we'll limit you to three minutes, but rather than hear speeches from you guys, try to give us some questions that will really help us move the debate forward.
Good morning. I'm not sure if this is going to work.
Yeah, pull it down a little towards you.
I'm going to put something up from the website, from the speaker. It's kind of lengthy, so I couldn't remember it at all. I wanted to just read it to him, so that maybe he let him see it, let him comment on it. So while I get this together, maybe someone else could speak.
Okay. Don't rush up here at once. Good morning.
Good morning. I would like to ask, if it would be, I would like to ask if it would be financially feasible for the state to put money into education, so that we could have local schools test the water, the sand, you know, sand, silt, soil, mantle, core. So if they could test the soil, the sand, whatever, the minerals, and test the water, maybe even the minerals that are in the water's earth bottom, would it be financially feasible for the state to give education, to test it, and then to clean it, so that it was healthy, and then to get the results?
Good. Thank you for the question. Morning.
Good morning, Nancy Darin. I'm wondering through the venue of healthy soils being incorporated in this. And we do have healthy soils legislation in the legislature. I don't think it's very robust, but I'm wondering if that becomes another angle that would empower us in some way in our pursuits, because soil is the foundation of all civilizations of life, of clean water, climate, you know, the whole nine yards goes back to soil. The other thing is, as we are finding out more and more about the human microbiome and the ecosystem microbiomes, the soil micro, we are walking soil. There is no differentiation, and our bodies depend on the bodies of our ecosystems. So I'm thinking with what's emerging there, there may be avenues in that could help promote rights, because we are microbiome as well. And so there's no, Wendell Berry says it so eloquently, that our land passes in and out of our bodies, just as our bodies pass in and out of our land. We and our land are part of one another. So all who are living here as neighbors, human, plant, animal, are part of one another, cannot possibly flourish alone. So our culture must be our response to our place, our culture, and are inseparable from each other, and neither can be better than they the other. So I'm hoping there are two venues in there that, and we support our farmers as well in making the shift, so they can do, get away from the industrial agriculture.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Additional public comments? That looks good.
Can you read that?
Yeah.
Yes, this is from the Nature Rights website, the Q&amp;A section. Oh, Anthony Johnson, by the way, Mr. Chair. And I totally agree with the speaker on the stance he's taking on a lot of the issues here. My question would be to him, would be, given the state of things now, the condition of the environment, and how we are, basically, we've come to the point, like the article says, that we are legalizing the destruction of the environment. You know, that, we know what, that we're doing this, but in order to create a balance between human life and our lifestyle, we have to compromise somewhat, you know, in terms of how much rights do nature have versus how much right do people have? And what we have now is a situation where we're trying to strike a balance, based on this report. Like you said, that, you know, the legalized laws, like the Clean Water, the Clean Air Act, and other state laws, they're there to protect the people somewhat. We need a balance. So if you go too far with this, you could do harm that maybe would be something that would be inconsequential to what we're trying to accomplish here. So I would like for the speaker to kind of elaborate on how you feel about legalizing environmental harm. Is it something that we're going to have to get away from, is it something that we're just going to have to make the compromise on? And accept that if we're going to maintain our current lifestyle, way of living, we're going to do harm to the environment. That's, I admire the speaker for bringing this up, because that's where we should be on the climate change debate. We should be talking along those lines, having serious discussions, because ultimately, that's going to be the determining factor, how we end up in all of this. It's tough, and I know a lot of people don't want to talk about it, but if we're going to move the ball down the field, we're going to have to have these conversations, so. If you can comment on the piece with the legalized...
Thank you very much. We'll get all the public comments and ask additional public comments. Good morning.
Good morning. Not a question, I'm sorry. I just want to take a moment to say how grateful I am to be a member of this community, and that, to just be blessed to stand here and hear these conversations in action, and like, thank you.
Good. Good morning, Doctor.
Good morning, county commissioners and others. I didn't come here to make comments today, but I just am overwhelmed by the good fortune of Florida and this community to have Mr. Lindsay here, talking about these issues. I don't think anybody else could have explained them, justified them, as well as he has done today. I'm totally impressed. I was with him yesterday on the Santa Fe River. You know how I feel about the river. We're losing the river. We've lost a tremendous amount of its functionality. And as I said last week during the public forum on water, we need a paradigm shift. That's the only thing that's going to save the Santa Fe River and springs, or recover them. They're way past harm already. And so if we need new tools to do that, I hope you all have broad enough minds to make that happen. Alachua County is one of the bright spots in the state in terms of concern about the environment, and you have the support of the public. That's why you're sitting here in your seats, and I hope you'll take that responsibility very seriously and be pioneers, if you can be here. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for all your work. Additional public comments? Gone once, gone twice. Yes, ma'am. You can speak from right there if you want.
Hi, good morning. My name is Susan Fairforest. I chose my name when I was 17, because Gainesville was such a beautiful place to live. It was like a beautiful forest. Anyway, I wanted to comment that I'm concerned that a lot of the agencies that determine what's permitted on our lands are determining, when they look at a permit, what damage can be done to that land. My concern is that a lot of times, there's nothing in place legally that gives those an authority, the right to say, you can't do this damage to the person applying for the permit. That leads to them having to allow the permit. My question to you is, what can you do as county commissioners to assure that our regulatory agencies have as much power as they possibly can to protect our resources, our health, our environment, to protect all of us, to protect our water, our air, and the earth we walk on? That's our mother. That none of us would be here if our mother wasn't here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional public comment? Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm, I'm from Deland, Florida. I come to this area for your natural environment here, and I was lucky enough to go kayaking with these people yesterday, and that foot you saw at, at the spring was my foot that had the slime coming off of it. And I, you know, as an American, a Floridian, a native Floridian, and, and a veteran, if, we have to protect our resources. And, and by resources, I mean our natural environment, not the, what we can use and abuse. And this is the only thing I, the rights of nature is the only way forward, as far as I can see it. But it's really a pleasure to be here today. We have a craving in this country for democracy. It's something in short supply in the last few years, and it's, it's a beautiful thing to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Additional public comments?
One, gone twice. All right, so Mr. Lindsay, I'm going to ask you a few questions on behalf of the speakers. So first of all, in terms of educating folks, what do you think the best way is to educate people about the rights of nature? How, what's the most fundamental way that we can get the word out that this is something we need to be doing?
I think today was, is a great start. I mean, deciding to transmit and live feed, and folks are watching. I think more hearings, probably. If you guys are going to decide, you have, of course, the legal requirements for certain hearings, most likely, but adding to that, so it's an open and transparent process. But I also think just individual conversations with folks that you're in contact with to make the idea less fringe, because we think it's the next mainstream, mainstream horizon for environmental law in the United States.
In terms of rights of nature, soils and agricultural activities have been brought up. Are there some rights of nature efforts in other places that have focused on that sort of activity?
None come to mind off the top of my head. Most of them have been about waterways. So, a big area of rights of nature protection, both internationally and in the US, has been about rivers and streams and waterways. In Hawaii and...
What about farm animal protection?
No, not so much. Talks in terms of ecosystems. The Non-Human Rights Project, which was at P I E C, talked a lot about sentience and sentience and animal rights and personhood and those types of things. Big supporters of the Non-Human Rights Project, but we deal mostly with ecosystems, so system rights kind of thing. And, you know, the right to farm law was brought up as perhaps being in conflict with rights of nature laws in some ways. The right to farm laws have been struck down in several states as a violation of equal protection, other constitutional guarantees. But a shorthand way of talking about the ecosystem protection work we do, I think, is it's about constitutionalizing environmental protection. We, in the system, treat the stuff we have the most respect and value for, like human rights, at the highest level of protection within the system of law. This is about elevating rights of ecosystems to that highest level of protection. That's sometimes a shorthand that we use when talking with folks and municipal officials.
And for Mr. Johnson's question about, we've legalized a certain amount of environmental destruction, and a lot of county ordinances do that. We've got a certain amount you can develop and a certain amount you have to set aside. How do you balance that with the, with the rights or desire for people to maintain a certain lifestyle or economic return from land? So, where, where does the rights of nature factor into that balancing act?
Yeah, so first off, sometimes not popular to say, but I'm not sure we can maintain our lifestyles. I mean, it's just, it's a fact that we're exceeding our constraint system. We're exceeding our ecosystems, exceeding the, what the planet can give us. So I think there's changes that are needed on that front, and I think the rights of nature stuff begins to curtail some of that stuff by the largest actors, like corporations and governments. But in response to his, his specific question is that they're not called permits for nothing. They're issued to permit something to happen, something that otherwise would not be legal. That's what permits are about. Sometimes we look at regulatory systems as being protective, but the first regulatory agencies in the United States were created on behalf of the largest railroad corporations in the US to create a layer of authority between the people themselves and their own government. And so there was talk in very early Attorney Generals of the United States about the reason for the regulatory system is to protect the companies, the corporations, so that they have a government-running interference in between the people and themselves. And so our concept of regulatory agencies may be skewed. People come to us and say, well, the regulatory system is broken, because it's not protecting places like Post Springs. Well, maybe it's not broken, maybe it's working perfectly, because that's what the regulatory system is supposed to do. It enables that to happen. So I think there's a mind change, a paradigm shift that has, has to happen for us. But this is not about lowering environmental standards. It's about augmenting them. It's about building above a floor. It's not throwing out the floor, just like we don't flow, throw out the floor of state and federal environmental protections. And as radical as it sometimes seems, for localities to claim the power to escape preemption effect by the legislature, that exact system currently exists between the federal and state government today, in that state governments can exceed federal civil rights protections at the state level with the state constitutional bill of rights. So it's been a big thing over the past 40 years, and now generally accepted by the courts, that state governments and state constitutions can exceed minimum, in, minimum civil rights standards that are found within constitutional rights provisions in the federal bill of rights. That relationship already exists between the federal and state governments. What we're talking about is bringing that relationship down to the state and local governments, so that local governments can exceed state standards, something that the state governments can already do vis a vis the federal government. So, sometimes it seems kind of like a radical shift, but that relationship already exists. It's just a question of replicating it between the state and local. And then the question is, becomes, who's going to force it to be replicated? And the answer is not the state legislatures, because they will never voluntarily constrain themselves, but it's up to you guys, unfortunately, to, to do something that forces that confrontation to occur, so that the law can change. The, the history of the United States is laws changing. It's about reversals of existing precedents. We sometimes think of it as more stable than that, but it's constantly changing. It is constantly changing. And this is one of those changes that is driven by necessity and survival, I believe, that this Cartesian philosophic stance of people over here and nature here as being separate, which is basically the essence of the US constitutional system, is that it ignores the connection that indigenous peoples have had for thousands of years with nature, in that we are together in all of this. And right now, we're seeing the ramifications of treating ourselves as separate from that world, in that our environmental systems, including our survival systems, our life support systems, are rapidly degrading, so.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, it's 11 o'clock, so we need to start winding down. I haven't really spoken or asked any questions, but I can just say that I find this to be one of the most inspiring movements that is out there. I recognize the legal constraints that our current system has built around protecting the environment, and what we need to do is figure out ways to dismantle them. We do a lot of that in Latchwell County. And in response to one of the speakers, just as an example, we are well into six figures, perhaps on the way to seven figures, in terms of protecting the Santa Fe from mining that will affect it. And so it's not like this commission doesn't have a commitment financially towards protecting the river. One of my concerns when I read the Safe Board Bill of Rights is it puts a lot of stuff on the county to do proactively, that a future commission might not be as willing to budget for or to pass the ordinances for. So, we need to put more power, I wish it was more about putting power in the hands of the people, and I've, I've wondered if there's not a way using legal theories about class action lawsuits and so forth, that we couldn't be creating a, essentially creating a class of folks in Latchwell County who have the right to sue on behalf of the environment. I was in my early education, steeped in theories about the tragedy of the commons and the parable of the lily pond and so forth, and we are very much living it right now. And if we don't do something akin to the Bill of Rights for Nature, then we will continue down those roads and, at our own peril. So, I'm going to adjourn this meeting right now. The Board of County Commissioners will reconvene at 11:30, and I encourage you all to meet amongst yourselves. I particularly want to thank Thomas Lindsay. He's with the Center for Democratic and Environmental Rights. They've got a great website, they've got a lot of literature, and I encourage anybody who wants to know more about the rights of nature to contact his organization and find out more. And finally, the, we're going to need to sort out the, between the Charter Review Commission, the Citizens Group, and the County Commission, how we move this forward the best way. It would be very confusing to have two or three of these on the ballot. So I'm hoping that we're all open towards, and maybe need to start thinking about setting up a meeting to work through what is the best way forward, as it sounds like Orange County may be working on. They have perhaps limited things in ways that don't make Mr. Lindsay as happy from a theoretical standpoint, but if they are working through Florida law and making it more likely that we'll have something good to challenge the legislature with, then more power to them. So, thank you all very much, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting.